Our guests to be muted. Just so that we keep the noise level down and everybody can hear. If you're participating by computer or tablet, you can find the raise hand icon either in your participants box at the bottom, or in the reactions box on the toolbar, or the more box on the toolbar. And when the chair asks for comment, go ahead and raise your hand and you can unmute yourself and share your thoughts. If you're on the phone joining us, you can dial star nine to raise or lower your hand, and dial star six to mute and unmute. With that, I'll hand it back to the chair and we can get the meeting started.
All right, thank you. Just a note to the commission tonight, all votes will be voice vote since we're split between electronic and in person. It is now 5:31 PM and I'm calling to order the Monday, May 10th, 2021 regularly scheduled meeting of the West Des Moines Plan and Zoning Commission. The first item of business is roll call.
Anderson?
Here.
Conlon?
Here.
Pasta?
Here.
Crowley?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Hatfield?
Here.
Commissioner Drake informed me earlier today that she would be absent this evening. We have six members present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any comments or modifications to the April 26, 2021 meeting minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Motion by Andy, second by Kevin, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. There are two public hearing items on the agenda tonight. Item 2A, this being the time and place fixed for a public hearing of the Plan and Zoning Commission to consider the City of West Des Moines' request to amend Title IX, Chapter 16, to add parameters for temporary drive-in theaters. Would the recording secretary please read the date the notice was published?
It was published on May 1st of 2021 in the Des Moines Register.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to accept and make part of the record all testimony and all other documents received at this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We had several. We'll go with Kevin, motion and Andy, second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Have you received any written comments regarding this matter?
We have not.
Thank you. Would staff please come to the microphone and explain this request?
Yes, Madam Chairman, this is Bryce Johnson, Development Services Planning. The item that you're considering tonight is again an amendment to Title IX, the zoning code, specifically Chapter 16 where it relates to temporary use permits. And the purpose of it is to add parameters for temporary drive-in theaters. More specifically, we're going to be considering or changes to Chapter 16 temporary use permits, subsection five, which is uses permitted within a temporary use permit, and then section seven, which are specific requirements relating to those, to the temporary use permits for drive-in theaters. Quick history, going through the staff report, I'm currently in city code, drive-in theaters are only allowed to operate in the city's open space zoning district and only allowed to operate if they have a, an approved permitted conditional use permit by the Board of Adjustment. It's important to note, though, that those allowances for drive-ins are for permanent businesses, not temporary or seasonal operations. So rather than amend the table of permitted land uses, staff thought amending the temporary use section would be a valid option. This item was presented to the Development Planning at City Council Subcommittee on April 19, and the Subcommittee was supportive of the development but noted concerns with safety such as visibility and being a distraction to drivers. Continuing on in the staff report, if you can, page two, identify some key aspects. And to summarize the key aspects, there is an addition to the visibility screening indicated within that staff report, we're going to include some specific requirements for day operations, such as being allowed two hours before and one hour after the movie, and then the season will be limited from April 1st to November 1st. Further, the uses allowed in all non-residential zoning districts with the exception for non-residential uses such as churches and schools, which are located in residential areas, and are allowed up to four times a calendar year. It's also important to note that the city approval of the site layout plan is required as part of a temporary use permit. So those are just kind of our key aspects, or I guess, you know, specific requirements that we would place or recommend the commission consider tonight. Also like to note that the city council is going to consider this, their first reading of this item next Monday, May 17, at their regular scheduled meeting. I'm sure that's all that I have from staff's perspective, and would like to take any questions you have.
All right, any questions from the commission? All right, do I have anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this item? If not, I will close the public hearing and ask for continued discussion or a motion.
I'd move approval subject to staff recommendations.
A motion from Scott, second from Kevin, voice vote please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Conlon?
Yes.
Pasta?
Yes.
Crowley?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hatfield?
Yes.
Six in favor, one absent, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 2B, this being the time and place fixed for a public hearing of the Plan and Zoning Commission to consider the City of West Des Moines' request for approval to amend Title IX, Chapter 9, to modify regulations pertaining to the use of legal non-conforming buildings or structures. Would the recording secretary please read the date the notice was published?
It was published on April 30th of 2021 in the Des Moines Register.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to accept and make part of the record all testimony and all other documents received at this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Andy, second from Kevin, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Have we received any written comments regarding this matter?
No, we have not.
Not? Okay, thank you. Would staff come to the microphone and explain this request?
Yes, this is Lynn Tweet, Director of Development Services. Just like your first item, this is a city-initiated change to the zoning ordinance. This happens to fall into Chapter 3, Section 4 more specifically. It pertains to the use of legal non-conforming buildings or structures. It's in light of a longstanding veterinarian clinic that was operating at 5508 Ashworth Road. The vet clinic has since moved out, the owners were very struggling to find a new use for it. So we've been doing some research on what are the possibilities for it. And basically, legal has informed us that there is some case law that shows that an owner of a non-conforming property has a vested right to continue the use of that property. And as long as the change that could occur does not have any more impacts, it's allowable to have alternate uses to it. The way our city code is written right now, it would just, it's very limited on the types of uses you can put in there. Daycare, physical fitness centers, schools, religious establishments, and government offices. So it's, it's kind of very confined as what can happen there. So with that, the case law, what we'd like to do is amend city code to basically build in some parameters that we would evaluate a potential use by, and if that use was found to not have any more impacts than the current use, it would be an allowed use within that non-conforming structure. So such things as an increase in traffic, hours of operation that might be drastically different than what the current use. Any kind of increased demand on public services, either from an emergency response or truly infrastructure standpoint. Noise, odor, light on an adjacent property, there can be no increase or no change to that. And then certainly no, no expansion of the structure itself. So with that, we'd like to kind of amend city code and allow that provision that gives us at least the option to consider some other uses than what currently code might state. And I would stand for any questions.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions from the commission? All right, do I have anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this item? If not, I will close the public hearing and ask for continued discussion or a motion.
I'm familiar with that property and I would move to approve the ordinance as the city has stated.
Motion from Kevin?
Second.
A second from Andy, voice vote please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Conlon?
Yes.
Pasta?
Yes.
Crowley?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hatfield?
Yes.
Six in favor, motion passes.
Thank you. There are no old business items on the agenda tonight, there are six new business items. Item 4A, the applicant has requested approval of a major modification to site plan to allow additions and renovations to the clubhouse located at 1600 Jordan Creek Parkway. I would ask the applicant to come to the microphone, give their name and address, and explain this request.
Hi, this is Kelsey Vedder, 14225 University Avenue in Waukees. I'm a senior architect with Farnsworth Group and am the architect for this Des Moines Golf and Country Club major modification. Our project consists of a one-story, 4,000-square-foot addition to the existing clubhouse, which will include a new dining and bar area. We're also renovating 4,000 square feet of space for a reworked kitchen and office area. With our addition, the exterior will now include two covered patios and revised golf cart and pedestrian paths. The additions, the additions' major exterior materials include fiber cement panels, stack stone, stained wood, and dark bronze storefront fenestrations to match the existing. Given the size of our addition, we have submitted for this major modification to the City of West Des Moines. So that's kind of the, the brief synopsis of our project and why we're asking for the major modification.
Okay, thank you. Does staff have anything to add to this item?
Cara Trigesser, Development Services, if we go back to slide number five, for those who may not have been to the property recently or not familiar with this area of town, the Des Moines Golf and Country Club is located south of University Avenue and west of Jordan Creek Parkway, which is the old 74th Street. Been there for a number of years. Slide number six shows a close-up of the clubhouse building, and you can see the, it's not octagon, it's a whatever, like a stop sign. White concrete, I'm not good with my shapes, there we go. The addition is going on either side of this particular lobby area. On slide seven, the light gray and the darker gray on either side is the addition. And then you can see in the gray, gray areas, the changes to the pathways and golf parking and sidewalks. And then the last slide was the elevations for the building. It's hard to show a building of that shape in 2D, but this is the, this is one side of it that, that pretty much, I think, the northwest side or the southwest side, showing you the, the two different levels and that, or three different levels and entrances to as part of the addition. Staff has reviewed the application and we support the recommendation for approval.
Any questions for Cara or the applicant? Nope, all right. Would anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? If not, I would ask for continued discussion or a motion from staff. I'm sorry, for a motion from the commission.
I'm a reapproval.
Motion from Scott, second from Andy, voice vote?
Anderson?
Yes.
Conlon?
Yes.
Pasta?
Yes.
Crowley?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hatfield?
Yes.
Six in favor, one member absent, motion passes.
Thank you. Item 4B, the applicant has requested approval of a site plan to allow construction of two two-story warehouse buildings to be located at 1690 and 1730 Allstate Court. I would ask the applicant to come to the microphone, give their name and address, and explain this request.
Cara Trigesser, Development Services, I will step in for the applicant. In this case, we have a site plan at South 18th and Allstate Court, sorry. And the Hatton Buildings are to the north, if you're familiar with those. This property is owned General Industrial. Two buildings were reviewed. The council approved last June of 2020 a phased site plan to start construction on this building. So we're now following up with the final approval of the site plan to close the loop. And you can see the site plan here with the two buildings and the addition of landscaping to that site. Also, then on the next slide is architecture of the buildings. I put both in because both buildings are, they're pretty much the same, but they're like twin buildings on the site. So we, staff does recommend approval of the site plan, the final phase.
All right. Any questions for Cara? Hey, do I have anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this item? If not, I would ask for continued discussion or a motion.
To approve, this building is presented?
A motion from Kevin, second from Andy, voice vote please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Conlon?
Yes.
Pasta?
Yes.
Crowley?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hatfield?
Yes.
Six in favor, one member absent, motion passes.
Thank you. Item 4C, the applicant has requested approval of a phased major modification to a site plan to allow footings, foundations, grading, and private utility construction at 1800 Industrial Circle. I would ask the applicant to come to the microphone, give their name and address for the record, and explain this request.
This is Michael Whaler with Bishop Engineering, 3501 104th Street in Urbendale, Iowa. I am the civil engineer for the applicant who is in Innovative Injection Technologies. They are also in West Des Moines, up on Grand and Fuller for their main manufacturing business. They own 1800 Industrial, and in order to stay fully in West Des Moines for their operations, they need to expand and expand the warehouse of this area. So we have proposed a site plan in which we show about 45,000, 45,000 square feet of addition to warehouse space. At the same time, this is a major thoroughfare for water to get to Jordan Creek, which you can see in the rear, which would be the bottom right or the southeast kind of corner of the property. We're going to do a major improvement there to get the, get the water from everybody that goes down, or what would be upstream. We're going to improve the infrastructure, make it bigger, broader, and get that into Jordan Creek. While we're working through the site plan, as we all know, it's very busy construction season this year, and in order to keep contractors there, we're going for the footings and grading currently today while we work with staff to get full site plan approval at a later date. And we believe we're very close on most of the comments, and I am happy to take any questions from the commission if they have them.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Oh.
All right, does staff have anything to add to this item?
Cara Trigesser, Development Services, I do not.
All right, do I have anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this item? If not, I will ask for continued discussion or a motion from the committee.
Pasta moves approval.
Second.
A motion from Chris, second from Kevin, can we voice vote please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Conlon?
Yes.
Pasta?
Yes.
Crowley?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hatfield?
Yes.
Six in favor, one member absent, motion passes.
Thank you. Item 4D, the applicant has requested approval of a major modification to site plan to allow the addition of two eight-bay detached garage buildings and future surface parking stalls at 435 South 88th Street. I would ask the applicant to come to the microphone, give their name and address for the record, and explain this request. Piper, you might need to jump in and kind of do an overview of the project.
No problem, this is Piper Mock, Development Services. The applicant proposes two eight-bay detached garage buildings resulting in addition of 16 garage stalls on the south side of the property. Additionally, the applicant is providing details associated with the future installation of 35 surface parking stalls. The applicant has worked with city staff on the architecture of the garage buildings to ensure that they complement the main structure and materials and color, and that those sides visible from the adjoining roadways and properties outside the development are enhanced. If the layout or details of the surface stalls differ from that shown and approved as part of this major modification, the submittal of a minor modification application will need to occur prior to implementation of this project.
All right, and that was staff. Okay, there's someone that has their hand raised on the, is that the applicant?
Yeah, sorry, I was muted. Can you hear me now?
Yes. Is there anything additional you wanted to add?
No, Piper did great. I don't have anything to add. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
All right. Any questions from the commission?
Jared, you want to state your name and address for the record?
Sure, this is Jared Murray with Civil Design Advantage, 3405 Southeast Crossroads Drive, Suite G in Grimes.
All right, thank you. Do I have anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this item? If not, I will ask for continued discussion or a motion. Motion from Kevin? Second from Andy, voice vote please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Conlon?
Yes.
Pasta?
Yes.
Crowley?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hatfield?
Yes.
Six in favor, one member absent, motion passes.
Thank you. All right, item 4E, the applicant has requested approval of a site plan to allow construction of a new bank building to be located at 301 5th Street. I would ask the applicant to come to the microphone, give their name and address, and explain this request.
This is Matt Cohen from RDG Planning and Design, representing the applicant, First National Bank, and Dean Whitaker is on the call as well, is the market president. So this project is a replacement of the existing bank building, which actually is under demolition as we speak today, starting today. So the, the existing building had gone beyond its useful life, so a replacement bank is planned, if you want to go one more slide. The project will move the bank facility to the corner to more appropriately address the conditions of Valley Junction, the existing conditions. And it's at 5th and Elm Street with the drive-through functions on the east side of the building and the parking on the east at the existing curb cut, or at the north, excuse me, at the existing curb cut. Go ahead. The project is designed to relate to other architecture in the 300 block of Valley Junction, but it also is designed to be in keeping with scale with the rest of the 5th Street corridor with a patterning of approximately 20-foot bays. So in the upper right there, you see the west elevation of the building facing 5th Street. That is designed in a way to break down that scale to be consistent with the, the area. And the same is true on the Elm Street side on the south, which is the lower-left image. And there's that massing, that cadence of about 20 feet, 20-foot bay as a piece. Go ahead and advance, I think that's an existing condition image. Yeah, so this is looking up Elm at the existing bank building, and of course, that, the building will be brought up to the corner to be more consistent with other buildings within the And I'll close there and leave it up for questions.
Matt, before you leave, can you give us your address?
Oh yes, 301 Grand Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa 50312.
All right, thank you. Does staff have any information to add regarding this item?
Lynn Tweet, Director of Development Services, not really on the project itself, I would just note that there are two conditions of approval. One of them is really just finishing up some details, and we got revised plans this afternoon, well on its way. And just making sure that any closures on public streets, alleys, sidewalks are obtained, the permits are obtained prior to closure. But otherwise, I can just answer any questions.
All right, do you have questions or commentary from the commission first?
No.
All right, do I have anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this item?
I would.
Yep, well, have you come up and give your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you. My name is Ralph Haskins, I live at 729 5th Street. And as the architect indicated, this building should reflect the nature and the character of the community of Valley Junction. It doesn't appear to be that way from our perspective. And I think I could speak on behalf of the Neighborhood Association here. It looks like a modern building that would be out of place. And we, we would like to see, and again, I use the word "we" collectively speaking, is something that has maybe some historical relevance, reflects the period of time of some of the historical buildings down there, as opposed to this modern look. And even the materials and the color, shading, none of those things seem to reflect what's around those neighborhoods or in those buildings, it's just going to jump out at you. We don't oppose replacing the bank building because the bank building looks like it's well beyond its life expectancy, and it deserves to be changed. But we think that maybe some of those, or at least I do, think that some material changes on the exterior could really enhance that, especially when you're moving it up to the corner, and you're bringing it up to the other storefronts. And you're going to have this building with massive glass and these lighter colors, that again, are not going to reflect the warmth, the richness, some of the textures and things that we see, including some of the things done recently with some of the buildings that have been renovated down there, like the Winchester Building. So I think what we'd like to see is maybe a little bit more due diligence on the exterior of the building before it moves forward. And again, not opposed to the building, but I think it needs to reflect a little more of the character of historic Valley Junction. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Yep, come up and give your name and address for the record, please.
Nick Waggy, 136 3rd Street, down the hood. This is my bank, and I'd like to mirror Ralph Haskins' comments. I think that'd be a great-looking bank further west, 86th Street, 8th Street, 235, out of Jordan Creek. I think it'd be a great-looking building. I think it is out of place down here in Valley Junction. I'd really like to see buildings being constructed that kind of reflect the history and the age of, say, the 1 and 200 block. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else that would like to speak? Do I have anyone else that would like to speak to this item? If not, I would ask for continued discussion or a motion from the commission. I do have a question. After the city council meeting, was it last week, what came from that? We are right moving towards a direction of working together on materials and look. Was this not included in that because it was already proposed?
Linda Schimmel, Development Coordinator. So the result of the workshop that happened, council meeting last Monday, was basically come an outline of the next steps. The intent is to look at hiring consultants to help flesh out what the expectations of the architecture are in the district, identify any other historic properties that we feel need to be looked at for protection, and then really trying to put some framework for additional zoning regulations on bulk and uses. That will take a while. This specific building was not included in the mortarium for any demolition or any exterior changes. This building is also not included in the historic district. I would say that this building is picking up elements of quite a few mid-century buildings that are in the district, especially in the 200 and 300 block, and is pulling some of the materials from those particular buildings. So in that historic district that was established, they did identify mid-century modern as one of the representative styles for the historic district. So we weren't necessarily concerned as staff that this doesn't represent early 1900 construction. We feel there's enough precedent in the area to model after the mid-century style.
Okay. I think I understand the mid-century style. I think what's glaring to a lot of us is the light-colored stone that's going to really stick out and make this building stick out right on the corner.
Yeah, and as mentioned in the staff report, there is several other existing buildings, both mid-century and turn-of-the-century, that use that same buff or cream color material.
Okay.
If it would be of value, I do have a couple of images from the street that I'd be happy to share, if you'd like to see that context.
Yeah, unfortunately, Matt, we were not set up to allow you to present.
Okay, no problem. So a reference maybe you're familiar with, the historic First National Bank, which is just catty corner and one building down, was a white terracotta building. The historic post office and fire station, both were buff brick buildings. The building directly across the street is a white brick building, and opposite corner is a cream-colored, also terracotta facade of a very similar scale to this, to this building as well. That building was built earlier, was not mid-century, but we were definitely drawing those types of inspirations from the corridor.
Thank you. Comments from the commission? Nope, the public hearing's closed right now. Thank you. Yep, do I have any commentary from the commission?
Well, I think the materiality is complementary as the architect has presented in relation to other facilities across the street and down the street, and I actually think it's going to be a beautiful building. I look forward to seeing.
I would share that sentiment also.
All right. Do I have a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion from Scott.
I'll second.
And a second from Kevin. Voice vote, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Conlin.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Crowley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hatfield.
Yes.
Six in favor, one member absent. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 4F, the applicant has requested approval of a site plan to allow construction of a 10,559 gross square foot mixed-use structure to be located at 304 Fifth Street. I would ask the applicant to come to the microphone, give their name and address, and explain this request.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Daniel Warwick. I'm architect with Peltz Design Services, representing Scott Cutler, who's wanting to do this project. We are located at 2323 Dixon Street in Des Moines, and what we're proposing is a three-story, roughly 10,511,000 square foot, mixed-use project at 304 Fifth Street, there in Valley Junction. The intent is for the first floor to be all commercial. Second floor is primarily residential with a little bit of commercial at the east end of the footprint that's open to the first floor. And then the third floor, again, primarily residential units with, again, a little bit of commercial at the east end. That would be sort of its own space. We're using a slate material and a metal panel material on the elevations to clad this building, and I know Scott is here, and he has some comments to talk more specifically about the materials and the intent behind the design of the project, but I wanted to give you just a quick rundown on what we're trying to do from a layout standpoint. So, Scott?
Thanks, Daniel. Scott Cutler, 304 Fifth Street. Tonight, we're asking for your approval of our site plan. We've worked hard to design a building of which we are very proud, and it requires no variances from its current zoning. And there's a few items I'd like to draw your attention. First, on the east elevation, you'll see mass timber columns, excuse me, showing through the storefront. Can you see those in the image there? Yes. Great. Our building has a mass timber structural design throughout, so when inside, you will see large wooden columns, beams, and decking when you look up at the floor from underneath. In addition to the environmental benefit of having a carbon-negative structure and the structural benefit of having oversized supports, we believe this mass timber design will have a very cool aesthetic, allowing our newly constructed building to feel at home within the context of historic Valley Junction. Mass timber is a new application of a very historic building material, that being wood, and is something we are very proud to bring to Valley Junction. Just last Friday, it was announced that this project will be awarded the Wood Innovations Grant, a U.S. Forest Services Award for environmentally progressive design. Our project is the first ever from Iowa to receive this distinction. On the less visible north and west elevations, you will see metal panels with detailing and an appearance that mimics wood but is more durable. We were able to meet with two neighborhood associations, and some of the feedback that we received was to add detailing to the metal panels to break up these facades and not to expose any metal and not to have any rusted metal. As a result, you will see that the attached stair and elevator core was changed to an alternate wood look board and batten cladding. The remaining metal cladding is a wood look V groove profile. Both of these were deliberately chosen to align with the mass timber wooden concept and to also align with the significant amount of wooden cladding in the 300 block of Fifth Street. Furthermore, the metal panel finish was chosen because it looks non-metallic and has a non-shiny finished texture similar to painted wood siding. On the most visible east and south elevations, you will see slate cladding that mimics the patterning of brick. Slate is a very historic building material and has recently been used successfully as a cladding for new construction projects in other historic neighborhoods. In this application, the slate will be applied to walls with a patterning and geometry very similar to brick. Many people look at the building and assume that it is brick masonry construction. Furthermore, slate is a natural material, also in keeping with the environmental component of the mass timber design, and has some variation in texture and coloration which should allow to feel at home within the historic context of Valley Junction. This building will be prominently visible from the east and the south, and so we wanted to have the primary facade material wrap both of these sides of the building. We made a significant financial investment to accomplish this with the slate cladding. Valley Junction is an important place to many people, and designing a new building within the historic context of the neighborhood is a challenging and significant commission, and one that we took very seriously. Our team has worked hard, and we're very proud of the design that we've come up with, and that's also a design that requires no variances from its current zoning. Please let us know if you have any questions. Thanks for your time.
Does staff have anything to add to this item?
Yes, Madam Chairman, this is Bryce Johnson. Again, just wanted to note that there are six conditions of approval for this project. Kind of, some of those are similar to the 301 project that you heard earlier, just requiring the applicant to obtain executed easements and permits for things like street and sidewalk closures, utility improvements, things like that. The other conditions of approval, note things like Parkland dedication. I'd like to just mention that the applicant is continuing working with the Parks Department to comply with the Parkland Dedication Agreement requirements, but also, the applicant is requesting council waive a screening requirement just specifically for the transformer along the alley. They did comply to an extent with screening of gas meters and other exterior utilities, but the last condition of approval relating to those gas meters is that applicant work further with the Development Services staff just to provide additional screening for those gas meters, but those are the only conditions of approval.
All right. Questions from the commissions first? I have a couple. All right. Can you pull up the site plan again? I missed parking. Talk to me about parking. Is there parking on the site, meets requirements?
Yeah, I can kind of address that, Madam Chairman. So there are no parking requirements for properties located within the Valley Junction Historic Business District, so it is in compliance with the code as it's written. There are no off-street parking spaces, but there are adjacent or other parking areas in the immediate vicinity to use. Yeah, the northwest and then along Fifth Street. So it does comply.
Do we have residential on the top? Was that right? Commercial on the first and part of second?
Yes, yep, about 11. I think it's 11 units.
No dedicated parking?
No dedicated onsite parking.
Is that consistent with the buildings across the street? Do you know?
It should be. It is, just given the code's exemption for properties within the Valley Junction Historic Business District.
Madam Chair, Lynn Tweet, Development Services. The Ryan Widerstein Building across the street is providing a little bit of alley parking on the backside of their building, but again, they were not required to require that. Valley Junction Historic Business does not require any parking.
Okay. The second question I had before I opened it up was, do we feel that the outside of this building also meets mid-century modern? Because it's very different from what we just approved across the street, so I'm just asking staff, I guess, does that also mid-century modern?
Linda Schimmel, Development Coordinator. So this building is not pulling any inspiration from the turn-of-the-century construction that you see or the mid-century modern construction that you see. This is modern in design and characteristics. It is trying to take a certain element of texture and pattern. As mentioned, we talked about the slate tile is trying to pull in some of the same pattern and texture that brick does. The openings on the east and the south side are very similar to what you would see in an older building that's three stories like this. The fact that the building is being built out of wood rather than load-bearing brick, we want to have some elements of wood cladding, and the applicant's chosen to do that in the board and batten and V groove. The material itself is metal, but it'll be finished as more of a matte finish rather than shiny or rusty color. One thing we'd like to point out is that with new construction in a historic district, typically it's encouraged to take the building and make it look like it was built in this era and not in eras past. When we talk about history, we're telling a story, and we don't want to, I guess, tell a false story by saying this was built around the turn of the century by mimicking that. So it's certainly acceptable to choose a modern style in a historic district. What we want to try to do is pull in some of those elements so it appears to support the historic buildings and not take away from them.
All right. Any other questions from the question yet? All right. Do I have anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this item? So I'll have you come up and give your name and address for the record.
Nancy Earl, 224 Seventh Street, and two blocks away from my house is my business, Nan's Nummies, 501 Elm. This building will be right next to my business. I have been in that location since April of 92. I've been in business going on, I was in two other locations in Valley Junction before that, so I'm going on 33 years in the Junction, and I'm really kind of upset about this building. It doesn't look like Valley Junction at all, not one bit, and these three-story buildings, they look terrible. The first one that went up looks terrible. Everybody at last week's council meeting hated it. There was one man that stood up and said it was okay. Every single other person that talked about it hated it. This is the same building. Scott has told me this is the same building that's going up, although it won't have the rust, which hallelujah, nobody liked the rust. I hate to see these buildings come in here because we're losing the historic Valley Junction. We're losing it bit by bit for every one of these that you approve. I don't see anything historic about that. I don't see anything historic about the one Widerstein's building across the street, and I don't see anything historic about the bank. I am worried for my business because there's no parking for these people. Are they going to be parking in front of my business? I have a very, very busy business that people are coming and going all day long buying cookies, and, I mean, cookies doesn't sound like much, but it's a thriving business. I'm having my best year ever despite a pandemic. I'm just really worried about that. I'm going to be having to call the police over and over and over to get people to quit parking in front of my store. I can just tell you that right now. And since when do we allow buildings to be built with no parking? I can see Valley Junction being different. Being a retail business, you have street parking. This is not a retail business that's going up. It's residential. It's housing. It's apartment building. I think there should be mandatory parking with this building, because, I mean, what's the point in building it if there's not a place for these people to park? And I'm also wondering about the height of the building. The first one already looked out of place. This is another one that's going to look out of place, and the one across the street is going to look out of place, the Widerstein's building. I'm wondering, and when the snow comes, what's that big building going to do when the snow comes from the north and starts hitting on my building? We just put, my landlord just spent tens of thousands of dollars putting a new roof on. I'm worried about these people using my dumpster, my private dumpster. I am not near any of the Valley Junction co-op dumpsters, so I have to pay for my own dumpster. Well, now I'm going to have to padlock it to keep people out of it. I mean, there's just, there's just nothing good about this at all. I know the building is bad. It needs to be torn down. There were raccoons living in there and eating out of my dumpster. They had their own personal Valley Junction bed and breakfast, but, you know, and before that, when Betty Hill owned it, when the floods of 93 hit, I watched that building. My kitchen sink was by my back door, which was open most of the time in my bakery kitchen. They never pumped the water out of that building. They just let it go naturally, and so it's nasty down there. So it does need to come down. It wasn't well taken care of, but I think it needs a retail store there. The more The more offices that go in there, other than retail, and the more apartments that go in there, we're losing it. We're losing our Valley Junction. It's not going to be a fun place to come shop anymore when there's just apartments down there. Now we've got three of them going up. I mean, it's just not the same, and I just think it's a crying shame. I think that's it. Well, can you explain to me why these people can put up apartment buildings with no parking? When other places, you make them have parking. You make them have handicap parking. Is this going to have any handicap parking? Can anybody answer that?
I can take all your questions, and we'll have staff address it after everyone spoke.
So no, you're not going to?
Nope, I will have staff address it.
Yeah. It's just a crying shame that this is going on because Valley Junction was West Des Moines before it became West Des Moines, and we're losing it.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else from the audience that would like to speak to this item? Come up and give your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Renee Johanningmeyer, I'm at 612 Walnut Street, and I too have the same concerns with, well, this is the most recent building, three stories is way too tall for Valley Junction. It does stand out. The fact that we have no zoning, that we have no requirements for parking, I'm going to reiterate, that is a big concern. I don't know how the retail businesses on Fifth, that's a competitive business anyway, I think we all can figure out with this many residential housing that these people are not going to have room to park. They're going to wind up parking right on Fifth Street, the residential folks will, and it's going to hurt the businesses. I guess the other piece is, it's really concerning to all of us, you know, we've, when this upper housing development started, it was to save the buildings in Valley Junction. Knowing that we had really wasted space with the historic buildings, we all wanted to, you know, we were all on board of, let's just make sure that the space is utilized, the housing of having rental space, whether it be for business units or residential, just the fact that we were going to save those buildings. And at this point, we only have, I think, one building, potentially, you know, two, that we were able to do that. The rest of it is just tearing it down, and how did we get there? It's the way the, it's just the way the program's set up. I mean, the way the program, and I'm sure, you know, not intentional, but it's set up to, the way you can make the most amount of money is to tear down a structure, whether the structure's in good shape or bad shape, and build as high as you can because you're getting paid $75,000 a square foot for each unit, whether it's a studio or a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom. So that's how we got here. And I can understand, you know, why you want to build a three-story as high as you can and stuff as many apartments as you can, but for our community, we're doing the opposite of what we all got together to try to do. Now, we still have buildings that are falling apart. The funding, you know, didn't make it viable for them with the funds available to fix the structures. So we talked, that's one of the things that we've been talking about in gathering and getting back together on maybe those need to be rewritten in the rules. But something was amiss here where what we put together is a program that incends people to tear down structures, to build new, build high, build is every square inch of that lot because there are no zoning, nothing taken into consideration for parking. We know that there's dangerous areas right now that the West Des Moines Police have been involved in it too, where, I mean, you can't even see to get past some of these areas. So strong concerns, not just on the look of the building. That makes me sad, living in Valley Junction as long as I've had, but the height of the building, it does stand out. And just, just getting back to, how did we get here? It's obvious. It's $75,000 funding per unit. We also, you know, we haven't even, the whole goal was to get families, more families, and to have growth, and we've lost all of our students. We're down hundreds and hundreds of students in West Des Moines, and most of these are just studios. They're one-bedrooms at best, very few two-bedrooms. We're not bringing in any families. We literally have not accomplished anything that we were all really excited about accomplishing, and that's, that's that. Thank you.
Thank you. Have anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Give your name and address for the record, please.
Mark Vayok, various addresses in Valley Junction. I moved out there in 1970. I moved there specifically for the historic district. I've personally renovated like 16 storefronts there. One thing I've learned over the years is things change. We originally did the street projects. Parking was a major part of that. We were all assessed for the parking lots behind all the buildings. That worked out well. The 300 blocks does have a lot of buildings that are out of use and outdated, and I realize change does come along, and I know people can develop things, but I do share the concerns of all the people that have talked, including myself. I happen to be a preservationist-type guy, and I think we're selling to the public the old-town atmosphere. I know things have to be developed. My main concern, being as I'm right next door to this building, is the parking. I know if you have that many people in there, that's that many more cars, and as things get developed, parking is going to be a problem, and I feel like we'll be back to where we were 25 years ago where, hey, we have to condemn houses, put up parking lots, and I do feel that somehow this development hasn't, you know, made a plan for parking. 15 years ago, I was told you had to provide parking. I had a tenant cafe, Sue, that bought a building between the Cat Cafe and this place, and they were told they had to provide like seven parking spots. What happened to that? I don't, you know, it's changed. I guess I haven't been paying attention, but that's my concern. I share their concerns about the historical relevance of the buildings. I think the design is good and everything else, but I don't want to see a brand-new city in the middle of, you know, dear old Valley Junction. I was an original foundation board member. We used to plant all the trees on the street, did everything ourselves physically, and I want to see it continue as a hometown atmosphere. So hopefully you'll consider that some way if it means more parking lots, but I know, I know that parking will be a problem. So it's my two cents worth.
Thank you. Come on up, give your name and address for the record.
Doug Roberts, I live at 112 South 33rd Street in West Des Moines. And I do respect the comments of the residents and the people who own businesses in Valley Junction, but I would like to look at this from a different perspective. I started going to Valley Junction back in the 1970s with my parents when I was still in high school, and Valley Junction is a gem. But I think it's important for us to consider that Valley Junction is a gem for the residents of Valley Junction, but it's also a gem for West Des Moines. And, you know, I've been in business for over 40 years, and one thing I've recognized is that change is really hard, and everybody's mentioned it. But if we don't change, we don't keep moving forward. And I, for one, am a frequent visitor to Valley Junction, whether it's coming down here for breakfast or dinner, or to have a drink, or just riding my bicycle by. And I love the old buildings. I love the old shops. I probably frequented many of the shops that you've mentioned, but I like the new businesses as well. You know, I like, I like being able to go to St. Kildus. It's in a new building. I like, you know, the other buildings may not look exactly like what's there, but I think it's also important to consider that we may not like the rules, but the city establishes the rules, and the developers come in and they follow the rules the city establishes. And we cannot continue, I've had the experience with this, we cannot continue to put a set of rules out there, have developers come in and follow them, and then come back and say, well, why didn't you put parking in? If we wanted to have parking, we need to stipulate that they have to have parking, and I'm sure that they will put parking in. It is concerning, but I'll tell you this also, you know, a lot of times when we come down here, we'd love to park right on the main street. We just go a block off, and there's plenty of parking behind the building. So, you know, I guess I just want to make the point that I do respect the view of the citizens of Valley Junction, but it is a resource for all of West Des Moines. The developers are following the rules. We may not like the rules, but I happen to think that the buildings that they're putting in there are extremely tasteful, and I might add, also at great cost to meet the specifications that we put out there. And, you know, it's not cheap these days to put a facade in place that looks historical but actually meets all of the requirements, and Scott's building is actually really taking an additional step in being carbon negative, which I think is really also very important. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Hi. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Jonas Cutler, 204 Holiday Circle. Going over the plan, I missed the number of apartments in there. I'm sure that was something that was discussed, but the density, you know, the number of apartments in there would kind of dictate some of the concerns that people were talking about. You know, as, I'm Jonas Cutler, as Scott Cutler was talking about, this building will be prominently visible. It makes a point of that, and it's kind of interesting then, that would be like, you know, the photographic negative of what's across the street, you know, this white versus black building with the, what they call the slate panels, right? Slate panels. So I remember back in the, in the 70s, and in order to, I'd go over my grandparents' house when this gentleman was first coming to Valley Junction, he mentions, and then, and then people would then, you know, want to recreate, you know, like an oak interior in their houses, right? And they would install these beautiful, then, wood paneling all over the house. Well, that quickly went out of style and was quickly torn down. Is that also not going to be, you know, potentially be the case with these beautiful slate panels that recreate the look of brick? I don't know. I just kind of want to think that through, you know, the progressivism and this wood paneling concept and the metal on top of it, this is different than what was, it was originally, this is different than what it looks down there. I'd rise and oppose this building being looked the way it is, and again, hopefully put some due diligence in here, put something in here that is a little bit more fitting to the neighborhood. As for with respect to the rules of the buildings and what have you, we see that the rules were published, and the rules are out there, and what this has really become is just a tax grab. You know, a lot of us are just kind of tired of paying the $75,000 per apartment, and the, whatever, something progressive grant, that is also coming out of my pocket. My name is Jonas Cutler. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you. Can you give your name and address again for the record, please?
Nancy Earl, 224 Seventh Street. I think St. Kildus is beautiful, and it fits in beautifully with the area, but it's brick and glass. I think the Cat Cafe, which Scott Cutler also did, is beautiful because he didn't change that much. It already fit in. Winchester's is gorgeous, but it fits in with the Junction. I'm not opposed to maybe a two-story apartment building there. It wouldn't stand out as bad. It wouldn't be an eyesore, but make it look more like Valley Junction. And I'm happy to hear it's retail on the bottom, but it, we just don't want to lose our feel. Like I say, we're going to lose Valley Junction. Just make it more conducive. Make, put some brick on there, not fake brick. Put some, you know, make it look more like Valley Junction, more like Winchester's, more like St. Kildus, things like that. He's done it before, he can do it again.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sarah Kellenbeck. My husband and I live at 602 Fifth. I've been in Des Moines since '72. I grew up in a small town, and I couldn't wait to get out of there, believe me. When I finished college, I came up here. Valley Junction has been a place that I've come to, to shop, to hang out since I first moved to Des Moines. I've loved the Junction. It is the best of my hometown without all the other junk around it that drove me out, and it's, it's just right there. The houses are cool, the businesses are wonderful, the business owners are great. They really react to their customers, most in a positive way. 2002, we downsized. We had both of our kids, one was in the military, the other was in graduate school, so it's like, let's get rid of suburbia. We lived in Clive, pretty far out west, sold the house we built, we'd been it for 24 years, and landed at 602 Fifth. And it was, it's been a project. It had been duplexed for a while, so it, it had some really ugly scars. We've got a lot of those cleaned up. But the best part of 602 Fifth was Thursdays, walking down to Farmer's Market every other evening when the weather isn't brutally cold or icy or rainy, being able to walk the neighborhood, meet the neighbors. You figured out pretty quick, a dog was a really good companion to have because people react to dogs quicker than they do people, and that gets us to where we are today. I appreciate the fact that Scott has really made what I feel is a good decision to lose the rust metal because the rust brings back shades of us making fun of Bruin Building when they first built it. The architect was from Dallas, and they'd used the metal down there, and it looked great, while you get it up here in our climate, and it doesn't look so great. So that is, that is a positive thing, but I'm, with the business owners down here, the, to me, the biggest problem is the parking. I realized that that wasn't part of it and that there currently are no regulations for that. I would urge you to please, please, as planning and zoning, and if we need to get the city council involved, get whoever involved. The parking thing is going to need to be addressed. The idea, I watch Nan's a lot. We eat at Cooper's, and we also love St. Kildus, but people that do business with Nan, they're grab and go. Now, a lot of people that have shopped in other shops down there will walk up to Nan's and also grab something, but having been customers there too, when we go in, we park, we go inside, grab something, and take off, we are noticing other customers doing the same thing. With that apartment building there, I would be really concerned for Nan's business having the parking that she needs to keep her doors open. I understand also, like you said, that there are no regulations. I would love to see some of these items addressed by either the city council or planning and zoning to kind of straighten this out. And as a last comment, Valley Junction is not the East Village. Thank God. I don't want anything to do with Des Moines, I'm sorry. I stopped paying taxes there in '77 when we moved to Clive. We don't want any, I don't, I don't care about Des Moines. I could, I can go days, months on end and not cross 63rd to go into Des Moines, but please help us keep the Junction with the environment it is right now because people love it. They do definitely love it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Yep.
Andrew Alpas, 729 Fifth Street. I don't mean to beat a horse to death here, but parking, the parking down in Valley Junction is restricted from 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM, which means nobody's supposed to be on the streets at that time. So that means the poor residents who are going to move in these apartments have nowhere to park a vehicle. Now, it's been explained to me that those are people are going to be living and working in Valley Junction and will not have cars, but we know that that's absurd. They're going to have cars. They're going to need to base places to park. You're going to have snowstorms, which is usually when the streets get cleared between 2:00 and 5:00 down there, and they need to be able to do that because the way the sidewalks are set up and everything else for retail traffic, you got to have the streets cleared off and get all that snow cleared off there, too. The other thing that's a concern is, and again, I'm hoping that it's been addressed, but trash. Are they using the community dumpsters? Because on a zero-lot line build-out like that, there's no place for dumpsters. And then the developer adjacent to the bank that's just torn the building down has purchased houses across, behind him in the alley on Fourth Street, and he's indicated he's going to turn that into parking spaces. And I don't really know if we really want a parking lot on Fourth Street. The houses have their own little quaint, I guess you could say, character, but a parking lot between residential houses because developers out there doing it. Right now, he's got it all gravelled, he's got construction equipment in a residential area. I personally don't think that we should see that kind of stuff going on there, taking a lot of liberties, I think. And in terms of maybe code enforcement, community code enforcement, we should take a look at that. I'm not sure if that's restricted or not. Just because there are rules in place that don't require these things doesn't necessarily mean it's in the public's best interest not to have these things. If we took every building down in Valley Junction and put up a three-story building, we would have chaos because of the parking issue. And so things have changed. These buildings don't represent the same use that the other buildings had, and so there's additional demands that can... use that the other buildings had. And so, there's additional demands that consider additional considerations or needs for things like parking. And if you go down there, we have a Saturday, we have Saturday meetings, the association. If you go there on a Saturday, you can see the makeup of the parking, and everything's changed a lot. And it's really fair to those retailers to be able to have people come in and out. So, you go into bings and things like that, people want to park out front, right? You want to be able to have that, because if you don't have that, they're going to go somewhere else. I think St. Kildus is doing great, because in Des Moines, there's other three restaurants, you've got to pay for parking. I don't pay for parking, okay? They come here, and by the way, he's done a beautiful job, and he's created a historical pride in our neighborhood and our community because of the effort and the work that he put forward. And, you know, you can hide, not to me, disrespectful to you, but you can hide behind all these architectural terms, like mid-century, post-modern, and everything else. But if it doesn't reflect the character and the nature of the neighborhood, it doesn't matter what you call it. And so, again, I'll just throw a little stone again at the bank. Buff stone doesn't fit if you're looking across the street and use that as some big excuse, because that building is stone, and the other building is brick, but it's painted brick. So, it does not reflect the character of buff stone. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I think I had one more coming up. Yep.
Neckwoggy, 136 Third Street. I'm going to kind of take this a different direction. Valley Junction, single-family residential development with a historic business district that runs through the center of it. The historic business district has apartments. We, or the city, set up the TIF in Woodland to try to get curb business owners to fix their buildings up, get people to use the second floor on a lot of those buildings. Failed, failed miserably. And then this shows up. And I got no problem with it. Carbon neutral? Kudos, buddy. Nice. But it's not a fit for Valley Junction. If you look at Valley Junction, pulling the Valley Junction off the railroad, you have small stores, single-story. They work up to the end of the 100 block to the theater. Three stories with like two apartments on the third floor. Goes down Second Street, the buildings start getting shorter. You get to the 300 block, like many communities in Iowa. And I suggest you all get a motorcycle, ride the back roads, and visit these communities. There's transition blocks. The 300 block was a transition block. It was to help business and homeowners kind of fit in. The city grew, kind of stops, housing takes over, down it goes. We put a three-story building in just at the other end of that block. All the windows are facing south. And when you come down Fifth, it's okay, but it's out of place. It's too big. It's way too big for that block. I mean, the biggest building in that block was the funeral home, the Kitty Cat Cafe. That was the tallest building. And then, if you go to 400 block, you got Lowell's, which was a gas station, and where they lived at. So, that was two stories. We're putting in 40 apartments, I believe, 36 or 40 apartments in the 300 block. Instead of Valley Junction Historic Business, it's now become Valley Junction Historic Business Medium Density Housing. And I think that deserves other considerations. Again, we start doing this, parking's going to be an issue. The city's reserved the right to take any property from the alley between Third and Four and the alley with Six and Seven, from railroad to Vine, rezoned Valley Junction Historic Business. And now, we're going to look at the need for parking. Reederstein's got two properties that he wants to convert to parking on Fourth Street. We're adding 12 apartments over here. There's 12 apartments or 14. We have 324.
So, this project has 11 apartments?
11 apartments and 324, 325. No, not 16. You're, you're, 16. 16. When Reederstein has, what, 11? I believe it's called medium-density housing. So, that means spillover comes over into the residence. Big hammer hanging over all the residence, the 2, 3, and 400 block, even the 500 block, with someone, a developer, anyone, coming in and wanting or needing to put in parking, or to go further into the 500 block and put in another building like this. One more issue. My wife and I have lived here since 1986, correct, Brenda?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, 35 years. We have seen Valley Junction change direction three times. One way north, one way south, one way north. Well, Scott needs to do some work there on the north side of his wall. Because if the business owners of Valley Junction decide to change direction again, is that what you want to look at? So, I appreciate the building, really do, but it's out of place for the area. Doesn't have the right character. It's out of size for that block. And again, I'm going to stand behind the parking issue with the rest of everyone else. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hey, I think, hold on just a second. I think I've got somebody online that's looking to comment.
Hi. I live in the 300 block of Valley Junction, right behind the new apartment. And besides the fact-
Yeah, can you, hold on just a second. Can you give your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry. It's Michelle Brobs. I live at 328 Fourth Street, so right behind the junction house, so the new complex. My main concern is, one, my house being taken away by developers for parking, because we know that's happening a couple houses down. But it's more the fact I can't use my backyard anymore from, say, 8:00 AM or where the sun comes up until noon, because of the glare off of the apartment complex. Two, there are people blocking the alley now, which I've addressed with the building managers there. The people blocking the alleyway or my driveway, because I only have access on the alley. Three, we're having severe issues with both St. Kildus and the apartment with trash blowing into our yard and all over the street back there. So, that's a main concern to us, is that the trash is becoming a big mess. I don't know if there's any way to address this or anything, but one dumpster for one apartment in a restaurant doesn't cut it in any form or fashion.
Thank you for your comments. I had one more in here that wanted to comment. Come up and give your name and address for the record.
Hello. Brenda Klossman, 136 Third Street. Lived in the junction for 35 years, like my husband Nick said. I agree with everything that Spence said. I also want to bring up something that hasn't been discussed, and that is the master plan of 2016, that the city of West Des Moines spent quite a bit of money and effort and worked fairly close with Valley Junction residents. And we, at that time, thought, great. We liked it. But then, something happened, and it totally disappeared. I don't know. Anyway, going back to that, a lot of the ideas were great. They were single-family dwellings. There were setbacks. If you look at this picture, perfect example, they were calling for patio seating, some small green spaces. This is gone. This will be nothing but a storefront and sidewalk. We're losing character right there, and we're gaining, oh, I'm not sure what we're gaining. But the master plan, if I go back to that, these buildings would not fit that master plan at all. It has been ignored, and I hate to see that. We talked about it at the city council meeting. Yes, we're going to relook at that. We're going to relook at that. But in the meantime, things have happened that don't fit that plan, and I don't understand why. And I don't think anybody can give an answer. It has not been addressed, and that's very frustrating. We're talking about hiring a new consultant. That was all done, and then it was put in drawers in the Historic Valley Junction Foundation, and the current director had to dig them out and started passing them out. And people are like, oh, look at this. I don't get it. I don't get why that was done and then ignored. And that's frustrating to the residents, because we did bean counts. We were all so excited about it. And it was totally shelved. We turn around, and these buildings that do not fit that plan are suddenly gung-ho. Let's do it. Let's give our taxpayer money to these buildings with no regard to that plan. And, yeah, parking, parking, parking. Can't say it enough. It's a problem.
Thank you. I think I've got one more online that wants to comment. Can you please give your name and address?
I think that might be me. Good evening. This is Matt Hoggie, the executive director of the Historic Valley Junction Foundation at 137 Fifth Street. I wonder, since I'm remote, can you confirm I'm coming through okay?
Yes. Yep, we can hear you.
Good. The Historic Valley Junction Foundation Board was pleased to have the opportunity to receive a presentation from Scott Cutler. We provided, therefore, written comments to the commission regarding our feedback about this proposed development. Generally speaking, I want to let those comments stand on their own turf, but I was wondering if any commissioners had any questions regarding those comments. We wanted to just make the point that we're here to, to respond or expand on any points that we have made in that comment letter.
Matt, this is Scott. I think you covered things quite well. I appreciate your feedback.
Thank you, Scott. Yes, we, like everyone else, are interested very much in seeing what the city does next with the public process regarding historic preservation and design guidelines in the committee, community, and we're looking forward to working with a broad cross-section of folks to discuss what issues come next. But when we wrote our comment letter, we tried to restrict it specifically to issues related to this project. And so, that's why I wanted to chime in tonight, just to see if there was any other question from commissioners, certainly as you move forward with this particular project.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, and we appreciate all of your hard work to keep things moving down here.
All right. If I don't have any more new commentary, I would like to close the public hearing and ask for continued discussion or a motion from the commission.
Madam Chair, can I ask a clarifying question of the applicant?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, to be clear, we're talking about 11 apartments, correct?
Erica, there were a few questions asked that you mentioned-
On parking?
-that staff would respond to, maybe.
Yeah, I think the main issue, the one question, Linda, was handicap parking. Would there be, there won't be any dedicated parking to this building. Would there be handicap parking available?
Linda Schimmel, Development Coordinator. So, yes, there's handicap parking available within the city parking lots. And there are several on-street parking on Fifth Street that are handicap accessible. But there is no specific dedicated handicap parking spots for this building.
They're not even really in the vicinity of the building?
Well, the Fourth Street, or Sixth Street parking is probably about two lots kitty-corner from this. That does allow overnight parking. On-street parking is limited by hour. And so, anybody who uses those spaces would have to move, although we can't tell a tenant that they can't park on the street. Certainly, we can work with the landlord, encourage them to use the off-street parking in the city lots. And then, just maybe one thing to, the question was asked, is this property does have its own dumpster, so they will not be part of the shared dumpster program.
Okay. One more parking question. I'm sorry, parking all the way. But parking, have we looked at the lots, as you said, are they behind the building? Have we, have we ever looked at the capacity of those lots and then the business capacity? I mean, adding apartments is obviously adding a lot more than just maybe three or four shoppers at a time, plus we have commercial. So, have you ever assessed that?
So, parking was assessed with the master plan. And at that time, they said that there was not a parking issue. It may not be as convenient as you want, but there was sufficient parking to support Valley Junction. One of the discussions we've had is, as redevelopment happens, at what point is the additional, either commercial or residential uses, need additional parking? That is one reason why we've had the discussion about the moratorium and some of the other zoning and context issues, is to start looking at this. Keep in mind, these are being reviewed under the current regulations, not future regulations. And we need to review this. If it meets or complies with those regulations, we really have no reason to say it can't move forward. Now, through this, through this discussion process, certainly there's things that have been highlighted, and we talked about it last week at the workshop, that we're going to take a look at. And it's not only going to be appearance, but context and appropriate uses. But we have two projects in front of you tonight that need to comply with current standards.
I'd like to say, you know, that it's obviously, you know, difficult, but the developer has gone through quite a bit of work and, and probably expense to get this project done per the rules of the, of the current Valley Junction building code. And so, you know, with that, I would probably stand to make a motion to approve the plan as presented and look for a second from the panel.
Before you do that, I'd like to just make a quick comment as well. I think to the folks in the room, we can obviously see your passion. I mean, you're very, very passionate about your community, and I, I think that that's really important. But I also think that, and I guess my hope is, is that going forward, we can continue to work, and I think this conversation's already starting to happen, but continue to work to, to, to try and make sure that all the stakeholders at the table, as these decisions go forward. But I think under the current regulations as they exist now, we're compelled to move this project forward, and, and I would be fine seconding that motion.
All right. I have a motion from Kevin and a second from Andy. Can we voice vote, please?
Anderson?
No.
Conlin?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Crowley?
Yes.
Davis?
No.
Hatfield?
No.
We have a tie.
When we have a tie vote, the motion fails. Now, the council can modify the motion, or, excuse me, the commission can modify the, the motion, or it can let it stand.
Linda, if this stands, does this go to city council still?
Yes. The, the project can move forward to city council. The city council would have to have a supermajority to approve the project.
Excuse me, one second. Lynn Tweet, Director of Development Services. I had legal check that this afternoon. It would not require a supermajority of the council. Only zoning aspects require the supermajority. So, it would proceed to council, but it would be the council majority vote would rule.
So, this is a site plan, not a zone change?
Right.
Okay. So, unless anyone else would like to craft another motion, it can go to city council as is. Am I all right with that?
Yeah, I, I share the residents' concerns about the materiality of the building. Yeah, I, I share the residents' concerns about the materiality of the building as presented. So possibly when it goes to council, there could be some additional plot prior to that meeting about what might be done to make the materials more allowable to the historic nature.
And this is Costa. And I think this is something, I mean, it's very controversial, some of the issues that got brought up here, the parking requirements. And I think as citizens of West Des Moines, we can all agree, some of these are challenges that may be difficult to overcome if you're a, a business out there or if you're a customer looking to partake in the offerings in Valley Junction. The unfortunate part as a, as the planning zoning, our, our body is really required to base our decisions on currently existing rules and regulations and guidelines. So passing this on to council, where council can make, they can have a different outcome based on the comments that people in the chambers made, which I thought, again, were very compelling. But as, as a governing board that we are, we're limited with the amount of actions we can take. And while I certainly don't have a problem with those that voted no, I think part of what we're doing is just approving whether this meets the guidelines as set forth by the city of West Des Moines at, at this level of the approval. You guys take your matter up with the council next week and may have a different outcome.
Thank you.
And then just kind of one point of order. The dissenting voters do have the ability to voice any of the concerns that led to the no vote. They don't have to, but they certainly can at this time.
Yeah, I'm happy to add comment. I mean, my, I'm struggling with the size of the building. I mean, when we got notice of this or I heard about it weeks ago, my first question was, three stories on that side of the street next to a tiny, single-family sized house? It just doesn't fit. And I was encouraged to think towards the future and what could be next to it in the future. But those homes, businesses were just remodeled, right? That's 30 years down the road before the next business comes in and puts something different there. So for me, it's just, yes, they meet requirements today. It just doesn't fit right there.
And my feedback is the aesthetics. I don't, I think that Scott could incorporate some sort of a conforming look with the remainder of the, of that street. And I think the, the exterior just could conform better. Maybe incorporate some other materials or something of that nature. I think Tim Ripma did a beautiful job with his building across the street and the height. And the entire Valley, I was born and raised in, in this community and I think the heights of Valley Junction differ all the way up and down. So I think it's.
Dave, your comment?
Yeah, I think everybody's hit on similar concerns, the materials, the scale, the aesthetics. Parking obviously is a real driver, no pun intended. So that study maybe should have happened prior to some of these projects going forward. But we don't have that luxury tonight.
Thank you.
I'd really like to say that I also agree with Chris Costa's point of view on this in terms of what we're approving and what we're charged to do here.
All right.
Yeah, I think we all can see that observation.
Linda, this goes to council next Monday?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Do we have any staff reports tonight?
We do not.
All right. If there is no other discussion, then we are adjourned.